On and make sure you're able to speak more loudly so that the recording is good. Good evening. I call this August 29, 2024 workshop of the Morrisville Town Council to order. We have three discussion items this evening. The first one is a solid waste contract renewal, and council will recognize Jeffrey Brown, Public Works Director, who will lead this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Just want to clarify as far as what tonight looks like. We are not asking council to make a decision, final decision on anything with solid waste. This is just the first step. So it's an opportunity to go over our current services and give some, get some critical feedback from town council as we start to put together an RFP. And just a reminder, ACC football kicks off tonight. We have state playing at seven, and we have USC playing at eight. So just keep that in mind as we go through this presentation. So with that said, we're going to go straight to questions. I love that. So what we got to inform you now is we're going to go over our current services. We're going to give you an idea of what other municipalities in Wake County are doing in addition to us. Raleigh was not included in that because Raleigh is so bigger and different. So we looked at the local municipalities. And then, you know, some items for consideration as we start to look at what solid waste services looks like for our community going into FY26 starting in July. And then also some, some data gathering, you know, what, what does council need to see from a data standpoint to be able to make informed decision when you get to that point? Then, you know, we'll end it with a timeline as far as giving you what those critical path moments are through this process. So to kind of give you an overview of our contract, start that process, you know, we have five routes within the town. They are Monday through Friday. Garbage and recycling are collected weekly, and, you know, garbage and recycling are collected on the same days on those routes. So they go through and they'll pick up garbage and they'll come back and pick up recycling. So they both pick up on the same day. Yard waste is picked up every other week, and just want to clarify, there are some months that are a fifth Wednesday, they are not collected on a fifth Wednesday. So it's collected every other week besides a fifth Wednesday. Bulk items are collected by GFL twice a year. That is a scheduled pickup. They'll, we'll sign up for that, and that way GFL knows where to go pick up the locations at. And as far as holidays, we are contracted with GFL out of Durham, and there's only three holidays that they recognize as far as the impact services, and that is Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day. And what happens then, everything just shifts forward a day. So they end up working on that, most time on that Saturday of that holiday week to make everything collect. Good. So we have 95 gallon carts that are used for collection, both recycling and garbage. Have the same cart, different color. We have automated side loader truck that comes through the neighborhoods with the exception of Kits Creek, and there's one other neighborhood that they service from the alley, and they have to do that with a rear loader, and that requires, you know, men on the back of truck to do those neighborhoods. So annually, we collect about 5,700 tons of garbage and recycling each year. Just also want to point out, we'll touch bases in a minute on it too, is that we have about 100 backdoor services that we provide, and that's for residents that have trouble getting their carts to the road, mental condition, or elderly, or whatever. So we, we do provide that service through GFL. And I forgot to ask, but if you would just, nobody's asked yet, so great, but hold your questions to the end. So there may be some upcoming information on a future slide that might would answer questions you may have, and that way we can stay on track to get home and watch football. Yard waste collection, that's collected every Wednesday, every other Wednesday, like I told you before, you know, sticks must be bundled. We have it detailed as far as what that looks like, you know, how residents are supposed to put out their yard waste. Grass clipping, leaves and trimmings are in paperbacks. We do not do fall leaf collection, loose leaf. It's done through, you know, bag leaves, not loose leaf collection. And then we also provide Christmas tree collection occurs in December and January each year. Special collections, as stated earlier, we provide through GFL two bulk item collections each year. That is in June and October, and that's for things such as furniture, grills, mowers, beds, scrap metal, you know, various things that you cannot put in your curbside waste bin. And white goods, we do that quarterly. Just to plug, we have white goods collections next Thursday, September 5th. Make sure you get signed up on September 2nd. But we do that quarterly, and that is with PW staffs. Public Works provides that service. Our streets division typically takes the lead on that, and we have to lease a truck and then go around and pick up white goods. Electronics, textiles, and batteries, things of that nature, we typically are collected two times a year at our Green Day events. We held those at Church Street Park. We have one typically in November, and another one in March to April timeframe each year. Residential dumpster services, we have a few condos and townhomes areas that have a dumpster location. It's still considered residential collection, but the residents bring it to that specific location. So we have a dumpster, and then they also have recycling bins in each one of those locations. So those are the neighborhoods that we provide that to. We also have dumpster locations and recycling carts at town facilities, and those listed are where we have those at. Solid waste contract staff support, you know, we do a lot of customer service in public works for solid waste. Steve Dickinson in our office and Elizabeth Cadrone, they both do this. Elizabeth sits next to me, and she's on the phone, it seems like, you know, throughout the day with residents asking questions about solid waste. And she's very good about accommodating and listening and trying to help resolve issues. So it kind of gives an overview of that. You know, we maintain the website, make sure it's updated and it's current information. Citizens' request for cart repairs, cart repairs are done every Wednesday, but you got to have it out on the street by 7:00 a.m., and you got to fill out a form. And so we work through GFL and make sure that that gets taken care of. So there've been 720 service requests to GFL this past fiscal year. So this kind of gives you an idea of the number of calls and requests that we get through our department. And then, you know, again, we coordinate quarterly white goods pickup with our staff, and the residents have to again call or submit a form for that on the website, and we get that information. And then our streets staff will make a route and go and pick that up. So what goes into our contract price for GFL? You know, obviously, it's the number of households that are serviced, number of dumpsters that are serviced, it's the frequency of which they are serviced. You know, each year, we look at the June Consumer Price Index, and that dictates what that increase looks like going into the next fiscal year. And then there's also a processing fee or credit, but, you know, it's kind of focused on the fee. There's not been a credit for some time now for recycling because it costs, you know, to recycle. And then also the additional fees from Wake County. So they increased tipping fees at the landfill. Obviously, those costs get passed on to the town. This chart gives you kind of a growth history of our residents served by our solid waste contract. And you can see in fiscal year 15, we were at 5,500, and then we, you know, up to estimated for this year is at 6,701. So we see a slight increase every year. This kind of gives you an overview of what that cost history looks like. Yeah, so what it was when we signed initial contract, you know, it was just under $900,000. In this fiscal year, we're anticipating about a $1.6 million cost for solid waste services. And that chart at the top kind of gives you an overview of per household cost, what that looks like. So this is a breakdown of that 1930, what we showed in the previous slide. So it's, you know, gives you, you know, the cost of collecting your trash, recycling. The recycling processing fee is the $1.41, which I just talked about, yard waste and disposal. So that comprises the 1930, and then our monthly cost is kind of comes over here to about $132,591, and a yearly total of about 1.6. All right, we'll transition now into kind of what our peer communities are doing. And one of the things I want to kind of call your attention to is the recycling frequency. You know, six out of 11 towns are doing that bi-weekly now instead of weekly. And then a lot of, you know, are also transitioning to like bulk yacht and pickup and white goods and stuff like that as an on-demand service versus having them scheduled, you know, certain times throughout the year. So I think that is something that we can look at as we start to evaluate our current services. So with that said, you know, what, what do we need to consider or what can we consider for changes in our solid waste services moving into FY26? You know, we need to, we can look at our curbside frequency collections, you know, we continue with recycling on a weekly basis. Do we continue, or do we look at going to every other week? I think one of the things that's going to help make an informed decision on that is going to be some data collection that we provide to, to council to make informed decisions. So that's one of the things that we really want to look at tonight and get feedback from council is what data do you need to make an informed decision when it comes to that time to decide what the future solid waste services look like for our, our community? You know, in, in far as dumpster services, and, you know, you know, right now, we provide dumpster services for town sites as well as residential. So there's consideration to move forward in the future to a solid waste user fee, and we would just need to simply split those town costs out. So that's not lumped into our overall GFL cost or whoever the vendor's going to be. Yard waste, you know, some communities are moving toward a containerized yard waste. Is that something we want to consider? But yet again, that's another cart that, you know, residents would have, and, you know, some people complain already about having two carts, so, you know, but that's why we feel like it's important as part of this process to engage the community, get feedback from the community. So we're not making decisions in the vacuum that we're getting community input as to what changes or enhancements they would possibly want to see through this process. And white goods, you know, quarterly are on demand, bulk item pickup, you know, buy-inly are on demand. I would say that on the white goods, I would envision this as an opportunity for us to shift this to our vendor and not have to do that with public work staff. I think that's an opportune time to do that and make, especially if there's going to be a consideration of a solid waste user fee. That way, it's all encompassing under one umbrella, and it's not co-mingled with solid waste personnel doing stuff and then town staff doing some things. You know, obviously, backdoor services, that, that process will continue because that's something that is the right thing to do. Special collections, again, that goes back to your white goods and bulk yacht pickups. You know, is it, you know, is it going to be on demand? Or we keep it like it is? Do we increase it? So, and then working hours and holidays, we need to define that, you know, are we going to continue on what we've already started as far as just holding those three holidays? Or is there, you know, consideration for defining something different as we move toward to defining the terms of our new contract? Then when you look at, we've got to define our performance standards, and I'll kind of give you kind of definition of what each one of those are. You know, environmental standards, that's, you know, how, how they haul it, or making sure the waste is covered up, you know, because they're not strolling waste down the road. Where is it, where is it being taken to? You know, back in 2008, the town entered into an agreement with Wake County that our solid waste would be diverted to the South Wake landfill. So, you know, that's got, that's where it goes. And that agreement was for a 25-year agreement or till the landfill filled up. And so we're still in that process. So we just need to make sure that we dictate that that's where our waste goes and ensure that that's the, the successful vendor understands that. And then, you know, what are they doing with, you know, if they have a hydro spill with a busted hydro line on a truck, you know, what, what, how do they clean that up? So that's the kind of things that we wanted to find and what our expectations are when we talk about environmental standards in the contract. As far as sustainability, you know, we want to look at, you know, make, you know, is there contamination detection, you know, as far as in recycle stuff that, you know, we can look at and determine if there's where that gets routed to, make sure we have RFI tags on the, of the carts, you know, you know, have some discussion with the vendor, you know, what do they think about electric garbage trucks? Is that something that they're looking into or transitioning to or entertaining the idea of? Does that want to help us on our master sustainability plan and our goals as far as reducing our greenhouse gas emissions? So, and then also part of that is then look at route optimization, you know, just so they're not, you know, running garbage trucks, you know, unnecessarily through neighborhoods, or they maximizing routes. And that's what we're looking at from a sustainability standpoint. And then the, the customer service standards, you know, who, who services those accounts? Who's, who's going to be that person on the end of the line when that residence has an issue? Is it going to be the vendor? Or is it going to be public work staff just taking those calls? You know, how is carts going to be repaired? Is it going to be something similar to what we do now? Is it going to find a new process? And just, so that, that's kind of gives you an overview. And then quality control is basically, you know, how can, what are they going to put in place to make sure that they're doing what they're, say they're going to do? And, and that we, you know, we going to set some matrix, some KPI indicators on the number of missed cans? Are we going to look at the number of complaint calls that we get, you know, just from a QA QC standpoint to ensure that we're providing a, a, a good level of service to our residents? Our, as far as, so what are we looking at to define in our contract details? You know, right now, we have a 10-year contract. I would envision that the contract that we would go to would be more of a five-year contract and not a 10-year contract. I think that's kind of the norm with these type of service contracts when it comes to waste collection. And then, you know, defining yearly contract profit judgment, adjustment factors, you know, we, we can define that in our, our RFP as that's how things are going to be increased kind of what we're doing now. You know, look at what the billing methods are going to be, how's that going to be done? We already talked about, you know, obviously, have possibly splitting out the dumpsters for the town stuff versus residential. And then, you know, look at our service map and service areas, you know, are they, where they need to be, or do we need to look at tweaking them based on when they were defined? So I think that, that are the things that, you know, we can certainly provide the information that we're currently doing, but we also don't want to take somebody's creativity away from a vendor standpoint. If they, they look at what we're currently doing and say, well, we, we would do it this way, and here's why. So we want to make sure that we live, give some opportunities for those efficiencies enhancements. So we want to make sure that we live, uh, give some opportunities for those efficiencies enhancements that we may not necessarily be capturing now. And then also, you know, uh, also defining the equipment. Obviously, you know, we can't just go to automated, uh, collection because we have, uh, neighborhoods that have the alleys, the concrete alleys that are serviced from the rear. And that we will also make sure that we define that to a vendor that's getting ready to submit a bid on the contract. Understands that, hey, I can't service this with, uh, just one armed, uh, bandit trucks throughout the community. And then also the supply and repair and replacement of carts. You know, if we, if GFL is a successful vendor at the end of this, then there's, that's, um, not much of a, a change out. But if, you know, if we have a, a new vendor come in and we're looking at changing, you know, fifty-six hundred carts out, uh, both recycling and, uh, trash. So I mean, it's some logistics stuff that's got to be taken into account. And then again, communication methods, who's going to be, uh, the, that frontline person taking those calls? Is it going to be the vendors, is it going to be, uh, public work staff? Uh, as far as making sure that the, the residents are informed when things happen, whether it's an inclement weather day. You know, service can't be provided, making sure that those residents are informed and they understand, uh, that why things didn't get done. And then also the service requests, you know, if they have a broken car, if they have a missing car, you know, who do they call? So the gather, data gathering consideration. And so this is where we feel like it'd be an opportune time for us to engage the community, uh, with, with a, a survey to, you know, basically see what they have an interest in. If anything, changing the existing service levels that we have. Or if they wanted to, uh, like white goods, you know, is that something they, they would like to be done on a on-demand basis for a charge versus us getting it twice a year? And then, you know, so we, we want to, this is a kind of a three-pronged process. Is that we want to put out an RFP, uh, with what we may want to consider. So what I would envision, uh, far as an RFP would be, we would take our existing service level that we currently have. And that would, was, we could put that in a RFP as our base bid. And if there's any changes we would like to consider moving forward, we can put bid, put bid as this alternate bids. And that way we have a cost on what those enhancements or changes are going to be. So we can take the information we get from the vendors. We can take the information that we gather from our residences. And we can also take the information that we gather from questions or statistics or data that the council may want to see. And once you have all, all that information, then when it comes to make a decision, you can make an informed decision as to what that looks like. So, you know, we, we want to know what their thoughts are on the various things that we're already providing. You know, as far as collections, you know, and then, you know, we look at, uh, you know, possibly food. That's something that, you know, people, uh, you know, some people may have an, an interest in. So just things to consider as we start to look at our solid waste contract. So timeline, you know, so we're here today because, um, it's important for us to start this process to get feedback. We needed to kind of give you an overview of what our services are, kind of what we feel like is a, a plan to move forward with. And the timeline is obviously, we're here today. We feel like, you know, we need to go ahead and develop, uh, survey questions to get out to the community. And then also to go ahead and develop an RFP, uh, like I discussed with some alternates that we can go ahead and hit the street. And, and get those both out into October timeframe. That's important for, uh, multiple reasons. Because, uh, if we're looking at changing a vendor, then that vendor needs to have adequate time to ensure that they can get carts ordered. They can make sure that they have the adequate staff and adequate equipment. If they need trucks to make sure that they give them a, a good enough lead time to be prepared to hit the ground running come July one. And also, also is important for us to, to, you know, get that cost back in here, uh, in the, you know, by no later than the December timeframe. So we can take that information and provide that because if there's still, uh, an interest in establishing a solid waste user fee, we need this information to be able to determine what that fee looks like as far as what our actual costs are going to be. So that's why it's important for us, uh, from a timeline standpoint. So, you know, what we, what we'd see is issuing the, the survey and, and, uh, no, early October and then the RFP around the same time. And then get survey results back in November and, and then hopefully the proposals back and some middles from the RFP in early December where we can start pulling this information together. And then come back before council sometime in, you know, I would say January timeframe, uh, to present this information and start having that discussion and see what that looks like. And then obviously in about early February, we really need to be, uh, making a decision to who we're going to utilize for solid waste services. So we can give them ample lead time to prepare for providing that service to our community. So I've talked enough, um, so this is a point in time, uh, I'm not sure who went up first. Uh, I guess Mayor Pro Tim has got that under control and I'll answer questions. And then, then as part of that process, then get feedback from you as well. What, what do you want to see from a data standpoint that we can provide you to help you make informed decisions?
Yeah, I recognize, uh, council member, Fender.
Thank you. So I have a few questions. Um, going back to the beginning of your presentation, um, I did not see commercial dumpsters listed. So who services commercial dumpsters?
That would be up to the commercial owner to, to define who they choose to do service with.
Okay. So they set up their contract?
That is correct.
All right.
So this is strictly residential is what we're, services that we're providing.
Okay. And do you know where CFL Durham takes their recycling? Is it in Raleigh or somewhere in Durham?
I'm not sure exactly. I would, I would think maybe Sunoco, but I can't, I'm not sure.
Cause I know of a Sunoco location in Raleigh. Would they be, is there another one in Durham or would they be taking it?
Probably two, I would say Raleigh.
Okay.
I would, that would be my guess. We can certainly confirm that, but that would be, uh, my assumption.
All right. Um, yeah, I'm curious because, and that goes to my next question about. So I realize, I don't know how many years back now, recycling, we did, towns got a credit. And I realized that we haven't in a while. But I remember when Ann and I took that tour of Sunoco. The, um, whoever the facility manager is talked about, the majority of their recycling went to local companies that converted, you know, that took plastic and converted it into, um, whatever those things are called. But the majority of their recycling went to local North Carolina and South Carolina facilities. So we're, we're not ship, putting it on shipping containers and sending it to China or elsewhere. So what I would think, we should be getting to a place soon where we're not having to pay a fee. Cause I thought the excuse, their reasoning for us having to pay a fee and no longer a credit was all the additional cost for shipping it to countries that didn't want our stuff anymore. So we'll, do you, and maybe you don't know the answer. But I would expect that we would eventually get to a place where we would start getting a credit again.
I would say based on the market and what I've seen from a trend standpoint in the solid waste industry.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure we'll ever get back to a, a credit.
Really?
Yeah. And I think it's, there's multiple things. It's the cost of, uh, having to recycle. Uh, I don't think the commodities as far as the market is not where it was at one time.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're not, you know, when they sell those recyclable materials, that they're not getting the money they were at one time.
Okay.
And so I think that sort of that and the cost of your collections and then if you have, uh, if it's contaminated, you got segregated out and recycled. And so, so there's a cost of having to segregate that out and this goes here and this goes there. So that's, um, pretty demanding as far as my, uh, resource standpoint on those companies. So I think, you know, I would be very surprised for us to, to get to a point in, you know, in the foreseeable future unless things change, if things go the way they are, for us to, to get a credit back.
Okay. All right. Uh, so I noticed there was a decrease in costs per household in twenty twenty-two on your bar graph. So what contributed to that? Forgot where I saw it. Oh, on slide twelve?
Yeah, that could be, um...
Not per unit, but yeah, it's per, per household.
I don't have that directly in front of me, but we certainly can get that answer. My guess is it has probably some, more to do with the recycling fee as far as that rebate, as far as that cost would probably came down. So that's what really fluctuates, but also to the consumer price index. So that, that controls that rate. So those two factors there really dictate what that rate looks like going into the new fiscal year. So if that rate was, percentage was lower, uh, and it go up as much or it could have dropped, then that adjusted that, that overall rate.
Okay.
But we can get specifics on that, provide that at a later date.
Cause I, I thought in fiscal year twenty-two, we were already seeing the effects of inflation. But I was curious as to what the context was there. Um, so what would be, one of your, um, things to consider for new service? If we did a new contract was containerized yard waste? Is that, what's the advantage of doing that? Is that somehow, does that save money in any way or?
I wouldn't say it saves money. It's just a different type of service and a different type of way of handling that waste. You know, right now there's specific requirements in which a, a resident has to provide that and, and put it by the street, by the curb. And it's got to be certain diameter, it's got to be certain length. Of containerized, I think, you know, it does away with your, uh, your bags as far as you put your grass clippings or leaves in a, in a cart. And basically if it fits in that cart, then it goes into the truck.
Hmm.
So I think, you know, it would ease that to some degree.
Mm-hmm.
I would not necessarily say that's going to save money. That's probably going to end up costing more money would be my guess. But if that's something that the council would like to get a price on, again, we can put that in as an alternate, bid alternate to see. I mean, you know, at that point in time, as a bid alternate, we're not committing to anything. We're just, you know, saying, okay, we may want, we want to consider this. And then we can get the prices and then we can make an informed decision if that's something that we want to do or not do. And I think a lot of it too is going to depend on what the residents want to see.
Mm-hmm.
You know, what, what do they want? Do they like the way that current service is or they want to see something changed? So I think that's why, that is so important to, to get that feedback from our residents as part of this process.
Yeah, I agree.
I can add a little to that too, because I've, uh, lived in, in communities that have both of those services. Uh, and while there's a disadvantage of a containerized service, because now you've got something else you got to put in your garage or on the side of your house or wherever, um, it does kind of clean up the street a little bit on those, on those days rather than having piles and bags and things. Um, and during storms, uh, it, it is quite possible that some of the debris that's in the street when anybody picked up could actually clog the storm drains. Um, if those bags don't hold in, in heavy rain or something like that, they could spill out grass clippings and so on and so forth. And, uh, and, and so that, uh, that could, could be a detriment to the, uh, uh, stormwater system. So, um, there, there's, there's other issues for that. And it's probably easier for the, um, the contractor to pick those up rather than using a grappling hook or whatever, whatever else they use. They just grab onto it, dump it and move on. Uh, but it, it does have its disadvantages. And, and I think to Jeffrey's point, where it's, it's a value-add service to some degree. It also has something that we would want our residents to, uh, to be able to weigh in on. Do they like that or don't, or don't they, once we explain all the advantages and disadvantages?
Okay. So I only have two questions left, so, um, plus I'll just take Steve Brown's time.
You, you can take as much time you want.
Yeah, I got two. Um, so will, are, do you guys foresee on-demand, um, service for bulk goods and white goods, uh, saving money?
I don't miss, well, that's a tough question to answer and I'll tell you why. Because right now, like, white goods, we're doing that internally. So I mean, that's not costing them anything.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so if you go to a on-demand service with white goods, obviously that's going to be a, a set fee. And then they, they will pay the vendor directly, most likely how that would be set up, how some other communities are doing that. The vendor, if it's GFL, Hoover Republic, they pay them directly for whatever that established fee is. And then they, and it's a scheduled service too. So we say on-demand, but it's a scheduled service. So you call and they may go and pick up, you know, every Tuesday or every Thursday or whatever that timeframe is. But you call ahead or you fill out a form and you get in the queue to get it picked up. But, and then you pay your, your fee at that point in time and then they get it and then they remove it. But the, the, the thing to that is, uh, you know, some people like the convenience of it. Because right now we do it quarterly. So if you have, for instance, say, a washing machine that would go out at your house and you had to replace it, then, you know, that takes away from the fact that you don't have to pay somebody to get it or you have to haul it out for yourself. Or you put it in your garage and wait for three months for the quarterly pickup to come around so you can get it out of your way.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, there, there's a benefit. Again, I think we're trying to, you know, it's hard for us to project what that looks like from a cost standpoint without asking as part of the RFP. And also without weighing, you know, having to sit as, as a resident's weigh in and say what they want. Because they may like, I'm good with what we have.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if that's going to keep costs down, I don't need to incur, I don't want to incur any additional costs.
Right.
But, you know, I do see as an opportunity that, uh, whether it's done on-demand or, or done quarterly, the way we currently provide it, that I would shift, I would recommend shifting that to the vendor. And that would not be something that we do internally. And that would alleviate, alleviate the fact that we've had to rent a truck and then take our, our streets crew that are responsible for other things to take something, you know, away from what we're supposed to be doing to go do white goods on the day, you know, every quarter.
Okay.
And so right now, while there is no cost to the resident for that, there is a cost to the town.
Yeah.
Cause we do have to get equipment. We do have to take our crews off of, of other duties to assign them. Uh, and it, it works. It's, it's helpful, but, uh, but that's a cost that's spread out across the budget rather than the user who needs an item picked up, pay a fee for that service. Um, and it's generally not that expensive. I don't know what the contract price would, would come in at. But I remember in other places I lived, it's like fifteen dollars to get a refrigerator picked up. Uh, which is a whole lot cheaper than running a truck and, and how do you deal with that yourself?
Okay. Yeah.
Some are ten, some are fifteen, you know, it varies across the board.
All right. And my last question, and this just is, um, I'm just curious because I live, I back up to an alley and my, my trash is picked up on the alley. And from what, at one point in time, a few years back, we, the HOA told us we had to, um, place our cars on, they couldn't be together. They had to be on either side of our driveway. And that was because the company was going to start using a side loader. I don't know if they ever did come through, but then they eventually, um, they, you know, I've noticed they just started. It's the rear entry. So I'm in curious, I mean, based on the alley behind me, I don't see why a side loader would, would not work. So what is the reasoning for having to use the rear loader?
Are your alleys one-way or are they two-way?
Yeah.
That's one, that's one reason. They have their own, it depends on what side of the street they're coming down. You'd have to take your car to the other side. I mean, it could be done. It's again, it's just convenience, you know, as far as if the residents are going to, that live on this left side are going to take them to the right side to be able to get picked up. So you're moving your car to the other side because it's a one-way street. They're going down one way. They can't go back down the other way to get, because the one arm is on one side of the truck.
They put their cans all on one side. Your cans are all on your driveway side, right?
Well, for me, there are just because the, but, I mean, in my alleyway and most... Well, for me, there are just because the, but, I mean, in my alleyway and most alleyways, they are all on one side just because there's not other houses on the parallel road. But there are um, a no along Kits Creek, both sides of Kits Creek. They um, houses do back up to each other.
Oh.
Um.
So I mean, that's, I mean, we, and we, that's, that's just me speculating that. But I can assure you, if there was a way for them to do it with a side loader, they would be doing that versus having a a rear loader, because it's more cost-effective for them to run a side loader than it is a rear loader.
Well, and that's what I'm thinking, I guess I'm think, I, just if it is cheaper, I would figure there's a way to figure out how to make it work, just for those in our, granted, this is just our neighborhood. The the few alleys that are like that, I don't know why they couldn't figure out how to get all their uh, put the bins all on one side. But, I could be wrong. Maybe they have looked at that and there's just not enough room in between our houses.
We can brought, we can come back and provide some clarity on that, um, we can talk with GFL, let's see.
Yeah, cause if it does save money, it seems, if it, and if it's not insurmountable, we should be doing that. Alright, that's my last question.
Thank, thank you. I recognize Councilmember Robert.
Are there any households in the town that don't contract for these services? Like, are, can people get their own company to come do it, or do they have to use GFL because the town is using GFL?
Yeah, we we provide that service as a town, so they they, you know, if if they're contracting out, if they live in the town, that would be wasted money.
Well, yeah, but it, but if we start charging for the service, I'm saying, like, what what would be the options for the homeowners?
Well, it would be, if we started, it would be a solid waste user fee and it would, you know, I would envision that would become part of their property, you know, go on their tax bill and it's paid at that point in time. The county would collect that and so we would still, it wouldn't change the service that we're providing. It would just be a charge that, a solid, a user fee that they'll now have to pay.
Right, but so what I'm saying is if they, for some reason, didn't wanna pay our user fee, if they could, felt like they could get it done cheaper, or they wanted to contract somewhere else, would they have that ability to do that or not?
It's not, they don't have, it's not an opt-in or opt-out.
Okay.
It's if the council at some point in time decides to move forward with the solid waste user fee, every resident pays that, part of their tax bill and they don't have the ability to opt out of that.
And it's not realistic to to think that as one household, you could get a cheaper rate. Cause it's so expensive uh, to have trucks and 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 all the equipment and the staffing um, to not go through, for example, entire neighborhood. So to go for one house here, one house there, and one house uh, in a third place, um, there's not a vendor that would do that. They they want a contract like this that en- ensures they've got six thousand customers that are, they're gonna pay that monthly.
Couldn't they haul their trash to the Wake County? Yes, when, when I lived in Higway, we were outside the town limits and that's what we did for a while, we just hauled our own trash.
It certainly, again, they have that as an option, but they're still gonna be paying a solid waste user fee. You don't have the ability to opt out of that, no.
Like, what if they don't request the trash?
They're still paying. There is a, it's a fee, it's a solid waste, basically a fee that the the service that the town will be providing is being funded so, by the residents and not by the the general fund anymore at that point in time. Right now, we we've got, you know, commercial properties that could be funded part of the solid waste user, I mean, solid waste uh, services that we're doing, cause we're paid out of general fund.
Right, but you're talking about providing a fee and I'm saying if people don't wanna pay the fee and don't want the service, that you're saying we can't offer that?
It's, it's, you don't have the ability to opt out of that as a resident, once you establish a solid waste user fee. You're paying for that fee at that point in time. It's a, it's a, it's a service fee that the the town would utilize to pay for those contracted services for solid waste collection. Or if we were doing it internally, it would pay for staff, equipment, stuff like that, if that was what we're doing internally.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't let this go. Um, so I, I don't understand how we can not offer an opt-out to a voluntary service. Like, I I know that there are people, I think my husband might do it, quite honestly, load our trash and recyclables up in the back of the truck and take them to the dump before he would pay us, you know, before he would be crazy about a solid waste service fee. So I, I really, I wanna understand why that's not an option for anybody that wants to do it. Or maybe a bunch of seniors wanna get together and one of their grandkids is gonna haul their trash and recyclables once every two weeks, cause they barely use, they would barely use a trash service. Like, I don't understand that, why we can't offer that.
I may be wrong and I can verify this and certainly get back, but I think so municipal solid waste collection is a requirement of, of legal statute requirement of the town.
So we have to, in North Carolina, we have to have it?
Yes.
Okay, I.
If you're in town.
Yeah, if you're in a corporate limit, I think one of the services that municipality has to provide, I think is solid waste services.
Okay, so, alright.
I may be wrong, but I can certainly verify that, uh, and get back, but.
Okay, I would, yeah, I'd be interested in the answer, if we're, if we're legally required to provide it, then I, then I guess we're gonna provide it. Um, okay, thank you, appreciate that. So what about, a couple of times in the presentation, you mentioned carts. Is that a cart, like to haul your trash cans to the curb?
Uh, ju- just the cart itself, that's what they call, that your trash can itself is considered a trash cart or recycle cart.
Oh, boy, that's too bad, because I was pretty excited about that. Um, okay, um, the food that you talked about, when you specified food, it broke it out as a separate category, is that composting? Or what are we doing there?
Yes, uh, right now, we are uh, in the process of starting or or getting ready to define and start basically a a solid waste collect, as far as a food waste compost collection side, maybe a couple of sites throughout town as a pilot program to see nobody, none of the uh, the eleven municipalities that we look at are offering curbside collection for food waste. So that would be something that, if there's an interest, you know, again, if there's an interest from council, if there's an interest from the community to explore that, we can certainly ask for a price to do so.
And that would be folded into the contract and the cost for everybody? If two hundred people are using the service, everybody's paying for it anyway, correct?
Or it, or it could be, again, it could be an on-demand service. If somebody wanted to have a comp, wanted to compost, that could be an option.
Okay, and that would work the same way as the white goods option, where you would just call the town and be like, I need my compost picked up and they would say, okay.
Well, if they have a, if, if, I imagine if we go to that route a while, I would envision that being a defined process. So if you sign up for uh, composting, you know, it's a collective service, you know, at a certain time that they know and put their compost out, so it's just that they would elect to do that.
But that would not be spread across every user, that would be per user, okay. Um, the yard waste, um, the, I just wonder, what is the cheapest way to have yard waste collected? Is that the big vacuum that comes through and, or what's the cheapest way?
That is, I would never recommend that. Uh, that's just, that's what John talked about earlier, as far as uh, leaving it out by the curb and the the problems it it, you know, promotes with stormwater, uh, drainage issues, uh, mice and rodents and stuff like, cause people put them out to the curb and they eventually they fall into the, you know, the street and then it is, it can be problematic.
Yeah, I'm not.
But but as far as, I would, again, I would think probably the service that we're providing now is probably about as a cost-effective service as that we can provide.
And that's the bags, right?
The bags and then your limbs, uh, yeah, so I think, you know, again, if there's an interest in from the community or from council, again, we can get, ask for a price, so, you know, do containerized yard waste. And ask, as far as defining, we'll put a ninety-six gallon cart uh, in as an alternate bid as part of the RFP, if that's something that council would like to at least entertain or at least see what that costs. Then you can make a informed decision. We can have fifteen alternate bids in addition to our base bid, if there's different things that council wants to see done or like to see cost on, so you can have a informed decision.
What we also have to keep in mind with the the vacuum trucks, uh, which are a great convenience, that do have other issues, those vacuum trucks pick up leaves and grass clippings and that's it. So another truck has to come and pick up limbs and and things like that. So now you have two additional trucks coming through every neighborhood, either every week or every other week. Uh, so it it, that's a downside of it, um, that isn't really thought about a whole lot, but um, when you see two trash trucks on the same day and now you got two other trucks coming, maybe the same day, maybe a different day.
Yeah.
Um, that that can affect some neighborhoods.
Okay, um, what's the overall success of our recycling effort? Do we, cause you, I know that contaminated recycling is treated differently than recycling that's not contaminated. What's our overall success rate?
Uh, for me, I can give you what uh, our participation is roughly. It's just somewhere, it hovers somewhere around, I mean, sixty-six to sixty-eight percent participation for recycling.
Okay, so, but I'm sure that the company that picks up the recycling would have some kind of metrics on
Well, that's.
how much they have to.
I don't, I don't have that with me, but we can certainly, you know.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that, just because I think if we're going to have a fee and we're gonna have recycling, that might be some education on our part that we could do as a um, as a town to get that average up at least and keep the stuff out of landfills if we can.
And and one of the things that we're, uh, we discussed this morning internally with staff, we talked about, you know, doing an audit on our recycling for us to go out and personally look into cans. It's cause, you know, some people are going to bi-weekly. You know, bi-weekly may not work for us here, you know, so we need to kinda get a a gauge on what that looks like. You know, we can ask residents, but we also need to understand what kind of volume. Cause right now, we we get a volume far as the tonnage of what recycling is, but we don't know what that looks like for each cart. So we need to do a sampling across each route to understand, you know, we can look, see, you know, are people recycling and then so, you know, how full is your cart? Is it full, is it half full, is it, you know, so that that's one of the things that we will be doing uh, over the next sixty days.
I'd be really interested in the, I'd be really interested in the results of that survey.
So that's something we discussed in the file block.
Okay, and that.
And that also gives us an idea too, as far as, you know, are people putting the right things in recycling? You know, cause I'm sure some people are, some people are not.
They are not. Um, okay, and then what's the cost to the town of the white good collection?
Just uh, not counting staff, I don't think truck rental, Steve's at what, eight hundred dollars or so, roughly? Yeah, each quarter and then, you know, we're putting two to three guys uh, on that route for a day.
People or is it all, is it all guys?
Uh, uh, well, excuse me, I'm sorry, yes, but to answer your question, it is people, but yes, they are all guys.
Uh, so, so eight hundred dollars and then s- um, personnel for twelve hours, personnel for?
It's, you know, just, you could, I meant, say, seven hours, you know.
Okay, so one day of three people and eight hundred dollars?
Yes.
So I would actually be, I would really like us to err on the side of not putting things in the contract that we're already absorbing. You know, I, I mean, because I think it's probably gonna be more expensive, or at least I would like to see the numbers on what it's gonna cost us to get white goods done. Or, you know, if there's an option to get it done and we don't pay anything, then I guess, you know, I guess we could look at that. But I would be interested in in what the quarterly, the same service level would cost within a bid. And then if it's gonna be a lot higher, then, you know, I don't know, I think we should think about keeping that in-house.
Yeah, and certainly that's, our plan is to, uh, again, the the base bid would be basically to provide the same level of service that we're doing with addition of the white goods, so we will, they know exactly what that cost would be on a quarterly basis. And if we wanted to do an on-demand as an alternate bid, we can look at that as well. The only thing that I would say, that the benefit of having everything under one umbrella is if you establish a enterprise fund for solid waste, for solid waste user fee, now you're combing line uh, issues as far as, it's a, it's a additional work for financial staff to be able to pull that funding out of what it costs us out of the general fund to reappropriate that back to the. So it just ma- it makes a little more challenge, I'm not saying it can't be done, but there is some nuances to keeping it uh, the way we do it now.
Okay, I, well, I would be interested in the total cost of the white goods, including potentially if there was gonna be some finance, finance staff time devoted to this, I'd be interested in the total cost, okay? Um, and I believe that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, recognized.
So I, I hate to disagree with you, Jeffrey, but um, a trash pickup is, I don't think is a legal requirement. I think um, um, the only thing that we're really legally required to do is inspections, but please verify that. And um, and when you do, ju- also look at then the other, there are eleven out of twelve municipalities in Wake County um, that charge a solid waste fee, so verify if they offer also an opt-in, opt-out. Um, cause I would bet you they don't offer an opt-in, opt-out, or uh, rather, well, yeah, an opt-out option. I would, I would think that would, we talked about this when we talked about a solid waste fee and and we don't have a finance department here to to kinda manage that, we're gonna have Wake County do it for us. And um, I think that would be really problematic, quite frankly. And especially from a, trying to figure out the pricing um, and and the cost, I mean, it'll fluctuate then. If you have half the town opting out and the other, you know, all of a sudden, how do you, how do you charge? So I think we talked a little bit about this, but um, I would be curious of the others. Um, um, and there, I'm not sure the others all have a finance department to take, um, you know, to do billing and all that. That might factor into whether they allow an opt-out, but anyhow, so, sorry, I just had to say.
That's a great, great point, yeah.
Sitting here silently, um, so as far as on-demand service, um, and you talked about maybe charging a fee, how would we do that? How, cause we, again, we don't have a billing department, so how are we gonna do that?
We would do that through the vendor, so the 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 vendor would be responsible for taking that payment directly from that resident.
Okay, 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 so somehow they would do the, sign me up, come take my white good or come take my bulk item, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I have always said I think that we should be charging a fee for that and that's why I asked Jeffrey for, I need, I need some data to be able to make a a really good decision on what we eventually do in the end. So I appreciate you um, saying that data's coming, cause that will help. Obviously, the pricing is gonna help too, but um, you know, if there are a few people taking advantage of white goods and bulk items, then they should be paying the fee to, for that service versus all of us absorbing that. So I have always been okay with um, with that. Um, with the exception of yard waste, that one I I, but again, I would need to see the data. My, because my impression or my kind of assumption, which is bad, is that um, we use yard waste more than we do the other services. So that's why this historical data would be important to me. And that's only because of what I see as I drive around town and I don't.
That is accurate statement, I can tell you that, you know, yard waste is much more relatively used than the white goods or bulky item pickup.
Okay, okay, and I kind of, okay.
So she asked, you know, she made comment about far as the, what she sees, she would feel like that yard waste is utilized much more than the white goods, and I said absolutely it is, you know.
But I'd like to see the data to make sure I'm, that's accurate, that would help me. Um, and um, I I agree with Ann's comment about, I, you know, and I think you said this in in the, you said it and it's in the presentation, that you, the base would be what we're doing today. So we'll get that and then we'll add or subtract from that. Um, and, but I would agree, I wanna know if we just keep everything that is today, what we'll add is that cost, as that, I'm assuming the cost is gonna go up, cause everything's gone up over time.
Yeah, I would anticipate we'll see a cost increase based on keeping services just the same.
Yeah, um, thank you, and then the other thing, when you do the survey of the of the residents, somehow ask if they'd be willing to pay for a new service, there needs to be, it's, cause if you send me a survey and say, we're gonna take up food at your curbside, we're gonna give you solid, or we're gonna give you white goods every month, or we're gonna give you bulky items, you know, I'd say, sure, yes, yes, yes. But I think if we're gonna increase um, the amount of service we're offering, um, I'd like the question of, and it's gonna be, somehow be an increased cost? I'd like the question of, and it's going to be, somehow be an increased cost to you, would you be willing to pay an increased cost? And honestly, that's whether we do a fee, a solid waste fee or not. It, it, they're going to pay somehow. It's going to affect our residents somehow. So that question needs to be in there. And then the different sized carts, I have talked about this for a while too. We have, the, the carts for trash and recycling are the same size. I, and again, I need the data to tell me this, but if we had a large recyclable cart and a smaller trash cart, would that, would that kind of send a message? And would that help people in what they're doing? And, you know, that would be, I would think, an incentive to say, oop, I need to recycle a lot more than I am. Or maybe we're recycling as much as we can at this point, I don't know. But I've always thought there should be a difference in the size of those carts to
I agree. Yeah.
No, there's different trucks that pick them up. Yeah, and that's why they have to be two feet apart so that the arm can get each one of them.
It's, just for clarification, it most likely could be the same truck, but they go and empty all their municipal solid waste out, and then they come back through and pick up the recycling.
Oh, interesting, yeah, because there's two trucks that come to my house.
Yeah, that's right.
Two different trucks.
They come two different times, but it could very well be the same truck.
Oh, these are two, okay.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, it depends. I mean, they may use different truck, they may use the same truck, depends on the route.
And I, I agree with Liz on the side, because like my recycling bin gets full too. Like I didn't even roll my trash bin out to the alley today, because there's only one trash bag.
So I think that's certainly something we can get from, in the survey, is to also get feedback from residents on their thought process as far as the size of the cart.
That's good.
And then obviously the frequency as well. So, you know, we, we want to make sure that we ask the right questions to our residents. So that helps all of us to make informed decisions and that we hear from them and we're not just changing services or not doing anything when they, there's an interest to do something different in the community. So I think that's why we felt like the survey was a critical component of this.
That's good, thank you. And could we put up slide fifteen? Because I think this is the meat of what we're all talking about. And I, I, I just want to ask a question about working hours and holidays. Are we now paying extra to work holidays?
No, that's just, I mean, that's just our baseline service. And so we just say, this is what it is. I don't know if we established that in the last RFPs, that's when GFL told us that this is our schedule. This is, you know, the hours that we work.
Okay, okay.
But we have an opportunity to define that if we want to. If, you know, we could say, you know, these are holidays that, you know, GFL, or whoever's going, the vendor, will not work on these days. And they have to adjust to that. So we can, we can dictate what we want to as a community as part of our RFP.
Okay, so, so maybe just to summarize all that, I'm okay with us going out and asking for a quote on what we're doing today and the level of service we have today. But I also want to put in there, if we go to bi-weekly recycling, what, what does that do? I'm looking, I am really fearful that this cost is going to be way more than 1.6 million that it is today. It's going to be a whole lot higher than that. And so I'm looking for how we can still offer really good service, but at a cost that doesn't escalate out of control. So I'd like to see a reduction in some things, like going biweekly instead of weekly for recycling. But again, I might change my mind when you show me the data that says, everybody's recycling business fill every, every week. We can't go biweekly. So that would affect my, how I felt about that. And then even with the white goods, I'm, you know, I would still like to know if we could keep that in-house, but then maybe not do a quarterly, maybe only do that twice a year, or even once a year. I don't, I don't know. But that, that's in-house, so that won't affect the contract. And then tell me backdoor service, what is the qualifications to getting backdoor service?
Steve, do you have the requirements on that? Go out there, top of your head.
Um, they usually request through the GFL if it's a, any kind of service they can't get it from their, you know, house to the So it's a request to give up.
For the sake of, if you can repeat what you said.
Yeah, so it's a form that has to be completed and submitted to GFL, and then they'll validate that, and then they'll provide that backdoor service if, if it does indeed meets their requirements. I think sometimes too, it may be time limited. So if somebody has a surgery and they can't, for instance, a knee replacement or something, they, they can't get stuff to the curb. And then there may be a temporary accommodation that's made for a period of time.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I would keep that.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd keep that.
I think that's the right, the right thing to do for the community.
All right, I got a few questions.
Yes, sir.
In this presentation, something that I learned was the car, car repairs. I did not know every Wednesday you keep your car out and they get, they repair it.
Say that again, that they
They, if you look at one of the slides on a Wednesday, if you keep your car with wheels and issues, they'll come in, you know, fix it if you, you know, it's by demand or whatever it is. They'll go, I did not know that, because I was thinking to call Public Works and ask how to do it. But that is a service that they offer that I have never availed.
I've called and said my wheel fell off.
Yeah, but, but this is as a service, they say, Wednesday.
So, yeah, GFL has a dedicated staff person. So if there's an issue with a broken wheel or a broken lid, or something's wrong with your car, you call, or you fill out the form online and report that. And they'll, you know, as long as you get it in before that Wednesday, you know, they'll go out and put it to the curb at seven o'clock, by seven AM. That individual from GFL will go out and either make repair, if he can repair the car, because that's their first thing, is they repair the car first. If they can't repair the car, it's beyond repair, then they'll replace the car.
Excellent. Okay, so, couple of questions. I think a lot of questions were asked about how much recycling and how much solid waste. We use, we use the RF
RFI.
RFI. And I was under the impression, when the arm goes in and picks it up, is it, and there's, is there any way that it could weigh how much trash is coming out of it?
We had that very discussion internally today, and that's something that we're going to be following up with GFL to determine. Because right now, the data that we get is basically on a
On routes, how many pick up?
And it doesn't tell us the, you know, the, and then it's important too, because not only knowing the weight, but also the volume, because you could, it could be heavy, but it could be something down in the bottom of, or you could have a cart full of bottles, or plastic bottles, and it doesn't weigh very much, but it's full. So that's why it's important. I think that's why we talked about doing the audit internally, to determine what that looks like, kind of see what, all of that waste stream.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. The reason I'm bringing that up, because we are smart city initiatives, and it would be really good when the cart, you know, when the truck goes with the arm, it weighs it and the RFI is there. So it'll know exactly this house, this is the amount of trash that I'm picking up solid waste or recycling. That will give a very good indicator. I don't know if it's already getting done in the country, but we could be a role model in establishing exactly the questions that are getting asked, you know, how much are they using? How much are they not using? I think that data, if we can get it, it's really useful. And we can basically use, have others copy us.
Yes.
So that would be good. One thing I'm not understanding is the cost is 1.6 million currently, whatever it is.
Yes, sir.
But we also are using almost two FTEs to basically get calls. And you said, like, you know, they are almost round the clock, talking to the customers, route pickup and all those things. Why is that not the responsibility of GFL? Why are we putting our FTEs there and, you know, wasting our resources when we are already doing, they are doing all rest of the things?
Valid point, and I think that we've talked about this internally as well, is that we would like to ask that to be a service provided by the vendor. That, that customer service option, as far as, you know, make sure that they, they're providing that instead of the town having to be that person. Because what it ends up being is we end up being a go-between. Because a resident calls us, and then we have to turn around and call GFL, whoever our contact is there, and say, this got missed, or this needs to be done. And so it, it slows the process down. And so if they have, they can pick up the phone and call that vendor directly that's providing that service, then, you know, we can ensure that, you know, it gets taken care of in a more timely manner. And then have some reporting matrix back out to us as to what that, you know, what are you getting called? How many people called you, what the issue were, was, and that various nature, as far as our reporting matrix.
And, and so I want us to be very realistic. Certain, I would like to know a bid for full service with the current, including the FTEs, you know, if, or let me back up. I need the full cost of the solid waste end to end from white good, white goods that we are using, there's, we are giving the service from the FTEs who are here, you know, doing it, and the rest of the other things, you know, what it is. Because that will give a true picture and not the contract
Correct.
negotiated price. And, and for that, it is important, because when we take decisions, we also want to know how much staff time and the other things are part of it. So that is one thing I would request.
Okay.
And then also, piggybacking, I would also like to know, as I said, a full service, the current service, and then biweekly, you know, how are you doing it? And the other question is, like, if you are forcing that as a tax, you know, like the, if at all a fee or anything is going as part of the taxes, what about the renter, right? Like, the owner might be somewhere in California, and it's like, whatever the fee is, and he'll say, why am I paying this? I'm not using it. Very well, that will, people will start talking about it. So I wanted to think about how the renters, you know, because technically, the people who are in the house are paying for it, but if you are not, and basically the owner's paying it, that cost will be passed along to the renters. Exactly. And, and so, is there
The renters are not paying for it now.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so if it, if there is, you know, a solid waste user fee established, and it goes a part of the collection process with the tax bill, then that's paid for at the same time, collected at the same time that their taxes are, and that's paid by the property owner.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Yeah, and the property owner then, if wants to recoup that cost, then they could just increase their rent cost to that
Okay.
renter.
And, and then at one slide, you said if GFL is not used, we use another vendor, then we have to use fifty-six hundred new carts. Who pays for that?
Well, it would be part of the overall cost of them providing the service. So, I mean, they would, they would make it part of that process. I mean, they would cover that cost as part of their, their, you know, yearly cost, where they would program it out over a five-year period. So it would be up to them, but they would, they would, we wouldn't ask for a specific cost on each can or whatever. That would just be that, yeah, here's our requirement that we provide this amount of cans, this size, and they provide that, you know, to each household.
Okay. And then, can, can you check San Jose? Because my sister, when I was visiting, they have different color trash cans that different vendors come and pick up. So like from what Ann is saying, it is not restricted to just one. They pay for the trash, but there are different companies which come and pick up based on who you have signed up for. So like you're saying, it, we, it comes as part of the taxes, but they're picking their vendor. So I just wanted that verification, you know, I can ask her, but San Jose is where they do that.
Yeah, it would be, yeah, certainly we can investigate that. So it'd be interesting to know, is that something the residents are dictating? Or is that something that the town has dictated and said, based on whatever being collected, this vendor's doing this?
Yeah.
We could certainly find out.
And, and the cost is also based on the size of the can too. You know, have smaller or bigger, you know, they have different sizes, different lids, colors. Okay, so that's one thing. And can we get a picture of the bin for the yard waste? Because I've never seen it, it would be good to get
As far as what it would look like?
Yeah, yeah.
It, it would just be, just like what you
Oh, yeah.
It's just a different color.
Okay, so it's not like I was looking like a bin?
No, typically what it would be, would be just, I think City Raleigh is, I mean, they have three cans out. So it's their recycling can, their waste disposal garbage, and then they have one for
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds
It's the same can.
Okay, same can.
That's right, it's the same size can, all three of them are the same size.
Okay, and last but not the least, when you are ready to do the survey, I would like our council to be the first guinea pigs. So at least we can do that, we are residents, we see it. And then, you know, Liz brings up very good points. So that would be a good one, let us first take it, first dig at it. And then if we had to tweak it, then that would be a good one at that time before. Data collection is important, once it's out, you can't change the survey. All right, that said, I'm done. Councilmember Steve, you have a question?
Yes, Mayor Portem, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, my question is to follow up on Mayor Portem's initial, initial point about small town cities and data. I think, I want to just follow up on that. I think we have an opportunity to really be innovative in any kind of solid waste fee program. And in addition to the, to the, to the, basically putting sensors, which we can put on these bins where we can manage in more real time, even maybe using AI, the amount of waste that's being recycled, for example. And then I, I'd be interested, Director Brown, you know, in terms of pay-as-you-go models. And years ago, we had some vendors talking to us in our back. And pay-as-you-go models basically means the more you recycle, the less you pay. And it actually can result in more revenue savings. It would be a bit of a shift, but I think it would be something that could potentially save more money. So I'd just like to get your ideas on that. What could we do to, as the mayor put it, do something very unique and different with our solid waste fees that could be very different than anything in Wake County? And something that people can look to, that could even benefit the public, like just slapping on a fee and then saying, okay, that's it.
Yeah.
So I would say we could certainly, you know, evaluate that, as, look and see what, what those options are as far as if that's something the council has a desire to, to evaluate as far as pay-as-you-go.
I'm going to say, I understand from where Steve comes, but you don't need real-time data of your trash. You know, that's not a kind of a thing that you would want it, because there's a lot of cost. But anyway, the idea is use the smart technology so that at least you get a good idea of what is going on. So it just gives you a trend. Well, anyone, any more questions? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so I, I have a couple of follow-ups now. So if all we're looking for is the, the weight of the, you know, like how much we're recycling as a town, I'm just wondering if like weighing the trucks on the way in and the way out would solve the whole problem? Maybe we wouldn't have to do anything crazy.
We have that information. We can, we can, we know what the, each route, as far as the total weight of recycling.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm saying, like, it, route divided by people gives you kind of a
Well, it gives you an average. It doesn't necessarily tell you, because there may be some people that don't recycle and some people that do. And I think that's, you know, if you had the specific information to each residence, you know, you could look at trends and see, and it would, it may be educational standpoint at that point in time, why, why aren't you recycling? You know, so, I mean, there's some value there, but obviously, you know, right now, all we have, as far as reporting that I've seen, is just basically, I want to say, you know, tonnage basis, based off the route, not individually.
Okay, so if we went to a vendor call system, would we be able Would we be able to reabsorb those full time employees back into the staff?
Well, I mean, there's, I mean, there's, they they have other responsibilities as well, so that's not, that's their dedicated uh responsibility.
Okay.
As Steve fills those calls uh from time to time and, you know, he's or he has other responsibilities. Steve did a lot of heavy lifting on on putting his presentation together. I would say he did ma- majority of it, you know, the team effort, but he did a lot of heavy lifting. So there's certainly a need for those employees. It just would free them up to be us more effective and efficient in uh doing other things.
Okay, good job, Steve. There's a lot of good info here. Um, okay, and then um, the other thing was the, okay, let's see. Full time employees. Oh my God, don't get old, guys. Too late. No, I.
You can think about it, though, you go to.
Oh, no, I got it. Okay, so in addition to being innovative in terms of our contract in our town. I would love to see or hear that you had gone together, you know, for like a solid waste summit with your counterparts in these other towns. To talk about, you know, in light of new technology, in light of changing trends, in light of whatever. What as a group is the best service that we could offer to all the residents? And I understand that different towns will have different needs, et cetera, but I bet that on that list, there's a couple of people that we could. If we got on a cycle that we could co negotiate with and say these three towns are bidding or we're bidding for these three towns to reduce the cost that way. Because I bet the bids to get three towns would be lower than the bids per capita to get bids from one town, you know? So just stuff like that where we can, you know, where we can maybe like think outside the box a little bit and and, you know. I do think that if enough towns said that they wanted their people to be able to opt out, that Wake County who were. Do we pay Wake County to administer the the pro- the parts of these programs that they're administering?
As far as.
You said Wake County's doing something for us.
Establish a solid waste user fee.
Tax.
And that's put on the tax bill. Yeah, there will be a charge from Wake County to administer that, collect that fee.
Okay, so and they're gonna, I would assume, make some kind of money for doing that. They're gonna, we're gonna pay them to do that.
Yeah, we would definitely have to pay for that service.
So but I'm saying that if enough towns wanted something that, you know, wanted a feature and were, you know, and were paying for the service. Then there's a, it's a lot better to go ask them for something if eight towns wanted versus one town, you know? So just, I mean, you know, just kind of some of the ideas that maybe we're coming up with, you know, pat it around a little bit and see. If this is something that would be valuable in other towns, what would that look like? And also on the question of it being cheaper to, it being cheaper to go with a thing like this. I have to tell you that that has not been my experience because in the town that we came from, it's, I mean, it's in New Jersey and, you know, everything's a little wonky there garbage wise. But but um, there were micro vendors, local vendors, that would actually do it very cheaply. If everybody on a street signed up, that kind of thing. And so I'm just saying, it's, if we're really trying to get the best deal, you know, get. Do the best for our residents on this too, which I assume we're all united in that we want to do that. Then I think we, I do think it's worth it to explore that. Like if if it's true that we're legally required to provide it or that there's no point, that there's no point.
On that, so I just uh, I just pulled that out of the air, apparently.
But you know, but if it's, if it's really a great deal cheaper to get it done at the town level, then there won't be micro vendors. If it's, if there are micro vendors, then it's not. So that, and then I would be way more interested in how do we get that opt out option provided? So that's just something I would like explored on some kind of level.
Liz, what's your question then? We had to wrap up.
Yeah, I know. Can we go back to slide fifteen again? Because I think slide fifteen and sixteen all the meat of this whole conversation. And I think we talked a lot about fifteen, but we didn't talk about sixteen, so I just want to make sure we're giving Jeffrey everything.
Also, just a point of order. I didn't say I was done.
You moved that.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry. But I'm just saying.
Okay, I thought you would have one.
But I'm just saying, yeah, I'm done, but that's not the point. Thank you, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, did we hit on all this? Did we all, I think we all kind of hit on a lot. I I didn't hear anybody asking to add a lot. So uh additional service, I think I I know I did and Satish talked about looking to go bi weekly, you know. So looking at uh cost savings, but I just wanted to verify all that.
Okay.
And do you have enough? And do you have enough?
Yeah, I would say is there interest uh in, you know, Lisa asking the what that cost is for on demand services uh for. White white goods and bulky item pickup versus just doing it the way we're doing it now? That way we can have informed.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can you also find out if it's cheaper if we specify more holidays where they don't pick up or if it makes any difference at all?
It's, I would, we can certainly ask, but I don't think it it's gonna matter because they still got to collect it. So all it does is push it forward. So the more time they take off, I mean, that means they don't have to work that Saturday or that week or whatever to make up that.
Yeah, I I think the way the contract works is is we set a weekly expectation. And they will decide for their staff what holidays they're going to work, what holidays they're not going to work, and then they figure out their staffing around that to meet the metric of a weekly pickup.
Any more?
No, I'm done. Can we just go to Clyde, slide sixteen real quick too? Because I do have a question on that one. So right now we're, um, if you have an issue, you call our staff. You call Public Works and they'll interact. Um, I think I like that. Are you asking if we want to change that up a little bit? Because you talked about.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, it's an opportunity for us at least to explore. We can ask them to include that as part of their providing that customer service aspect as per instead of the town doing that. So we can at least look at it and see what that cost is.
Okay, that's fine. I'm I'm good going either way, by the way.
Right.
Asking for a whole lot more and then also asking to take some stuff out and and then asking for what we're doing right now and figure out where we kind of land.
The thing to keep in mind that we've got to make sure of is that we got to craft a RFP to make sure we get the information that we want. Because we're, you know, we have timelines that we got to hit. So if there's things, we can always ask to provide costs for certain things that we may not necessarily have an interest in doing. But at least we can have a cost associated with that so we can make an informed decision to say, no, this is not, you know, something that we want to entertain.
All right, um, you got everything from us?
I think so. Uh, we've got a lot. Uh, so if there's anything uh that.
Yeah, they.
You can think of, certainly.
You can email that to.
Manager and uh, we'll get whatever data that you need.
Okay.
All right, if if you're done with the questions, uh, the manager was able to pull up North Carolina general statutes and and I'll tell you what chapter one thirty eight, article nine says. Uh, while North Carolina does not explicitly mandate that every municipality provide municipal solid waste collection services. State law allows local governments to require through ordinance that all solid waste generated within their jurisdiction be delivered to a permitted solid waste facility. Essentially enabling them to mandate municipal solid waste collection if they choose to do so. Uh, and within our uh town code of ordinances, uh, our solid waste chapter, which is chapter fifty, currently only speaks to construction debris. So that that's the law. You're correct. There's no requirement.
Thank you very much.
And then, uh, finally, let me, let me just say, uh, thank you to Jeffrey and his team. Uh, they work very hard behind the scenes. Our residents have um reasonable expectations. Uh, and solid waste is one of those things that you just don't think of. You put your card out in the morning, you go about your day, and then at the end of the day, you take your card back and and you go about your evening. And uh, when you have something that's unusual, you have a bulk uh or or white good or something like that, there's a process to get that taken care of. Uh, and and it's it's seamless, but it's a lot of work behind the scenes to make that happen. Uh, and this team works very hard to make that customer service experience so good that you don't even think about solid waste services. And so we want to keep that expectation with however we do a contract uh going forward. So, uh, so again, just thank you to Jeffrey and his team.
I I totally echo, and I think uh I wanted one clarification when I was talking about two FTEs was not to basically take their uh position. But to basically they can work on something else where, you know, the contract can wrap it up. And and more important, thank you for all that you do and your team and your department does. It's uh, you don't get enough kudos than other departments, but I think I just wanted to tell that.
It's definitely a team effort.
Thank you. All right.
I think we had the best video. I may be biased, I may be biased.
No, I I keep your first responders. I appreciate that piece of information. I have repeated that at several meetings I've been to, so um, thank you for that.
All right, at that, like, you know, we'll move into the next topic. The next discussion item is Marshall Chamber of Commerce Agreement and Council recognized Brandon Zurima, Town Manager, who led the discussion. Yeah, so do you want to take?
Thirty minutes.
Well, Giselle just told me I have zero minutes because that went so long, so I'm just gonna hand stuff out and leave, but uh. She's rough, I'm telling you.
Thank you.
This should not, this shouldn't take too long. This won't take too long.
Thank you.
You keep saying that.
Oh, no, and there's four.
Did anybody go to the the note session today that the chamber put on? I was scheduled to go and then I couldn't, I had to.
Oh, yes. No, that's fine.
All right, good evening. Council, um, here tonight, so regarding the Chamber of Commerce Agreement. So you'll recall that in the past, um, there was a agreement last signed in twenty thirteen. It was a ten year agreement. Uh, and then in addition to that, for some time, we've done an annual trade agreement that had a separate, um, no, no real cash exchange, more trade of services. Uh, the agreement in the past has been a fifty thousand dollar, most recently agreement. So you have expressed some questions about that, particularly related to the fact that the purpose of the agreement which you have before you, just for reference. Um, I just wanted to have that. Um, and you also have the most recent trade agreement. And then you also have the um information that the chamber most recently provided about what they felt they could provide in FY twenty five. So again, that's all just background information, so you have it. What I want to talk with you about is the actual draft agreement. So um, you tasked us with putting together an agreement to replace the expiring document and to also roll in the trade agreement into that. Uh, given where we were with trying to um establish a a new basis for what the fifty thousand dollars is going towards. In terms of what public good does it provide, because that's certainly a requirement of money, even though the chamber is a fantastic partner, we do a lot of good together. It's still public money, so we need to be able to justify that for a public good. So what I did was I took the old agreement and I looked at the trade agreement. And I used the information that Emily and the chamber provided as what they thought they could do. I drafted this document. This document has now been reviewed by myself, um, by Giselle, also by Lori Jones and by Emily Ziegler with the chamber. Have gotten some feedback from each of them to get it to this point. Um, I provided this to the uh president, excuse me, the chamber uh board, uh, along with Rose and Emily earlier this week after you received it. Um, so that they could know what we were talking about tonight. And I informed them that I would follow up with them once you give feedback as to whether you would like to see any updates or changes to this document. Um, given the attendance tonight, I will catch up with your three peers. I feel it's important to have feedback from everybody on this topic. Um, but I also would like to get this going um, uh, in terms of getting it adopted because it is a twenty twenty five document. So I'm gonna run through this. I'm not gonna read it to you. I'm gonna hit the highlights of what the structure is so that you know what that is. I'm happy to take questions as I go or at the end. So on page one of that, under recitals, again, this is really now focusing on collaboration around issues supporting economic development and small business support. It's not limited to that, but that's expected what the focus will be is how is the chamber helping support us in that regard in exchange for the payment you will make to them? Uh, you'll notice in the third whereas this highlights that this uh agreement is very closely related to strategic plan goal number six on economic prosperity. So we've highlighted that. And the now therefore statement, you will see that it is a sum of fifty thousand dollars that would be provided uh to the chamber. Uh, and then once we get to the attachments, you'll see what's what's coming back our way as well as what they, um, what we will be doing with and for them. Section one, the scope of services just highlights again that the chamber's uh work is highlighted in exhibit A and our work is highlighted in exhibit B. Uh, performance is just what's expected of them as a partner. Turning to the next page, uh, section three, four and five are really um just administrative pieces, happy to answer questions, but they're very straightforward. Section six, term and termination, uh, this is gonna be retroactive to July first of this year, so it will be a fiscal year agreement, given that's when you give the money. Uh, the chamber is on a calendar year for their uh budget and other operating decisions, but we need to have this on a fiscal basis. You know what you're giving on out of your annual budget. Under B, uh, what this says is that in for this first year, that there will be a formal sit down uh no later than March thirtieth. Between the council and the chamber in order to review where are we? Because you'll want to make that decision before we go into the budget process or as we're going into the budget process. Um, rather than trying to have that meeting somewhere in the the deep mix of that, there's generally not time for that. So this this requires um updates on what has happened before any decisions are made about a possible extension. Um, and under A regarding, this is a one year agreement. This is not an automatically recurring agreement like the last. So this would have to be renewed by both parties. So that gives you essentially, if you're not pleased with where we're at or what you're getting in return for the money, there will have to be a discussion and then an agreement by both parties to continue this. Or to to structure a new agreement if you aren't happy with what you have in this document. Should you choose to adopt um or extend this document, there would also be a separate conversation about, is it fifty thousand dollars? Is it something different based on what you've seen and experienced?
Brandon, can I, can I just?
Please.
So un- under B in the parenthesis there, it says end every March thirtieth thereafter. I realize the agreement will be reevaluated annually, but shouldn't that say end by every March thirtieth? Or you want us to meet on March thirtieth?
No, that that should be.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so D, it gives information on how the town may choose to terminate the agreement for just cause, and it describes what that just cause would be. Um, also explains how um, you know, once if it were to be terminated, no further obligation, that very typical legal language. Um, section seven just references the two exhibits that we're gonna talk about. Uh, section eight again is just typical notice. If somebody wants to communicate with somebody, they got to do it this way. Uh, sections nine, ten, eleven and twelve are all legal requirements related to should this go to court? Where does it go to court? Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm not gonna read all those to you. It's very boilerplate legal language that our attorney has reviewed. So I think the meat of this product begins in exhibit A, uh, which is on page seven. There are page numbers. They're fairly faint in the corner, sorry. But on page seven, exhibit A, it talks about the chamber's responsibilities to the town. So in exchange for the fifty thousand dollar payment, uh, there are several sort of different sections here, programming and training, general services. And then administrative and financial reporting, uh, based on what I've heard from you asked for that you're you want to see. So programming and training, it requires a minimum of two public policy forums hosted by the chamber and facilitated by them. That could be a candidate forum in the appropriate years when there's an election, an issues forum, uh, if there is something going on. For example, we recently did the um commercial realty uh forum, so that would be an example of what they would be um facilitating and hosting. And then just a general public policy forum. Um, they have done that in the past, not particularly recently, but they have the ability to to convene something like that. So two public policy forums in those categories. Uh, the next bullet is a minimum of four small business forums to address issues of interest and concern to small businesses. Uh, after that is a minimum of two life sciences networking events. They started those within the last year or two. Uh, they've been pretty successful in terms of uh getting people together in that uh industry. If you turn the page to eight, uh, a minimum of two networking events in other industries other than life sciences. Uh, next bullet, the state of Morrisville every fall, um, actually just communicating. it's probably November, but I'm waiting to get that confirmation. Next bullet, training for small business owners related to Hub Certification, they've done that before, it's a very good training to repeat. Other programming and training with relevant content intended to support economic development and small business growth, so that's sort of the catch-all, what else might we collaborate with them, that they would then provide. And then again, we may ask them to volunteer or participate in other meetings with the town, really to enhance our working relationship and collaboration. General Services for the Chamber, they will advertise town events for us, they will proactively expand their membership and their social media reach in order to reach a greater number of businesses in Morrisville, so for right now, that's just expecting growth. Don't know that it's practical number on that right now, but it does expect growth. The bullet after that, their best effort to ensure at least 51% of their members are businesses within the Morrisville municipal limits. Understand, they do a lot of stuff outside of Morrisville, but obviously, the town is interested in them focusing as much as possible in Morrisville. Next bullet, they will survey their members, a minimum of once annually on key issues identified in advance by the Chamber and the town, so we'll, we'll be a part of that. Next bullet, provide data to the town that supports town priorities and initiatives, primarily related to economic development and small business, so we'll be able to get a better understanding, once we have our ED Director and Small Business Person, of what data they have, and then how could we use that, and they'll be obligated to share that with us. And then, we've included a bullet that, when appropriate, they would serve as a co-applicant for town applications for grants, because there are any number of grants out there that we look better, or we have a more powerful application, or are more likely to be successful if it's not just us, but it's us and a community partner. So that's requiring that they would support us on any of that sort of grant application. You've turned the page to Nine, Event and Recognition Services, a lot of this is what used to be in the trade agreement, so again, they cover our membership dues for the town, we're recognized as a presidential partner on their homepage, and then we are recognized as a gold sponsor for the Chamber's annual meeting, we're recognized as a Launch Morrisville Program sponsor. I believe, Giselle, did you share that that was currently paused for the fall? The Launch Morrisville Program, did they discuss that at the last board meeting? Okay, sorry, may have been my mistake.
Brandon, my understanding is that it was paused based on information from Wendy and Rose.
Okay.
And it was a matter of really workload?
Sorry, just so people.
Yes. So my understanding from Wendy and Rose is that it was paused this year, and it was a matter of workload and balancing other events with the workforce they have.
Thank you.
So below that, designation of the town as a community partner at recognition events with two seats included, you can see the example events below there. All town employees attend events and programs at the Chamber's member rate. And then, if you skip down a couple of bullets, we have occasional one-day use of the Chamber's training room at no expense. Again, that's a moneymaker for them, so we don't want to overuse that and not have it available if we're not renting it, so we could certainly rent it anytime, but they will allow us one-day use occasionally that doesn't interfere with one of their rentals.
Can I ask a question about that?
Please.
Do, do we not use that? I'm sorry.
If I can, if I can get Steve around, he was.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Steve, you may ask a question.
Yes, I just want to know, and maybe you've already mentioned that I'm having some audio issues, but what would be the performance metrics then, over the length of this contract, just in terms of, would it be working with the manager and the Economic Development Director, along with the Council, to just make sure that we're metrics in there, in terms of like, how many new members? I am a bit concerned about pausing the launch program, but I think it's been, hasn't been that many startups participating in it, and Hotivation used to be a really good program, so I just hope that we, you know, can continue to focus on this thing, so I just don't know where my colleagues in the Council fit on that, but as I said last time, I want to support the Chamber, but I think it's very important that there's structures and parameters, typically, you know, I come from a sales background, so I think there has to be real quantifiable metrics and numbers, about how many members, what the revenue is, so we can see the rent rate, you know, maybe it is investing more in the resources, so I don't know, I just want to, any ideas you have, administration or colleagues in the Council, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Rao. So I would say, some of those metrics are gonna be around them, meeting the requirements that we've identified, as far as number of forums, number of meetings, support provided, and then again, you know, support for small business, and some of that we'll continue to identify as we bring our ED Director on, and we bring our Small Business Person on. You know, I do want to share that I think we're in a little bit of a unique situation with Rose having announced her retirement, so there's gonna be some flux over the course of the fall. They have a job description, they are hoping to hire in advance of Rose leaving, so there's some overlap there towards the end of the year. So, you know, we'll have an opportunity to work with Rose for the fall, but then with the new Director for the spring, particularly to work through what is in this document. I hear you speaking about membership growth, I think where they are right now, I think the most realistic approach, again, happy to hear other suggestions, but is to expect growth, and that to be sustained over time. And then, I think, as they settle in with a new President, and perhaps settle in with this agreement, as you look at that for next year, because I mean, it's September now, so you'll be coming back to this in six months, you have the opportunity to talk about more specific expectations, more specific requirements, depending on this year, what their growth looked like, and some of those other factors.
Thank you.
Thank you, because there's been a lot of turnover, there's been a lot of turnover right now, I think that hopefully they can get more stability, so yeah, absolutely, somebody is true, thank you.
Thanks. Any more questions, Steve?
No, Mayor Portman, Mayor Mello, I have no more questions for this time.
Sorry.
Thank you, thank you. What are we doing now as far as use of the facility? You said here, we get one, one-day use of the Chamber Training Room, are, what is the agreement now? Do we?
So there is no formal agreement now, it's been a handshake agreement to use it if we need it, and I don't know that we've used it for more than a one-day event at a time that I'm aware of. Genie?
Yes, that's correct, so for like, small business programs, we have utilized their room for one-day events, that could have been a couple of hours at a time periodically through the year, as Sarah, both Sarah and Erin have worked with Rose and Wendy.
I just question whether that's enough, if we should ask for more than one day? And I realize that's a money generator, what's that?
It's not just one day over the course of the year, it's just that we wouldn't typically ask for multiple days at once.
Oh.
Because they tried to rent it, that's a revenue source for them, so just limiting our use, and again, I think that speaks.
I, I miss, okay, thank you.
Really specifically to a town use, so I think even what Genie is referring to is really a collaborative use.
That's right.
That they're putting that up as part of their partnership, whereas if we just need it for a town meeting, it has nothing to do with the Chamber, we can get their space.
Okay, okay, I, I read that totally wrong, thank you, Ann. I, yeah, I was gonna say, one day, that's it, that's, there's a lot going on.
In the past, it's been PD, for example, for retirement parties and things like that.
Okay, no, that's it, thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, further to Steve's point about metrics, I don't really understand what they, what metrics are they currently collecting about the success of their events and the efficacy of their promotional efforts, and, and like, I, I don't see why Rose leaving or, or anything would affect what they could show us on those metrics. I feel like I haven't seen metrics, like actual metrics.
I think right now, they could show you attendance at their events.
Right.
And, and they can show you their membership information. I don't know that there's a lot of other metrics in terms of, you know, social media impact or other things, I don't know that they can directly tie, and I can certainly ask them, but I don't know if they can directly tie, you know, some of their work to an outcome you may be interested in.
Well, I, I feel like we talked about this the last time we all sat down with them, and we, we definitely said, I thought that we definitely said that we would like them to develop and present metrics.
Yes.
And that was, I don't remember when that meeting was, when was that?
I would have to look, to be honest, it was several months ago.
Okay, so, do we know how that, at least how that effort's going, or?
I'll have to check, I'm not aware of any specific development there, but I can check with them.
Okay, yeah, if you would, that'd be great, thank you.
Of course.
All right, thank you.
So, we pick up at the bottom of page nine, with Administrative and Financial Reporting, so this is also an area where I checked in with Byron and Casey to get an understanding of what we felt we should be able to see as the town. So this starts with the Chamber providing at a minimum quarterly updates to the town, getting back to what had happened in the past, progress on the aforementioned responsibilities, and they can be written or in person at our discretion, if you want them to come in, they will come in, if you want it written on the one quarter, it can be written, and again, they're scheduled to come in March, June, September, and December, with the March one will typically be the larger annual update of where we're at, with the other three just being more quarterly reports of what's going on.
Repeat, finish up.
Okay. So then, the second bullet there, provide the town with a formal agreement update no later than March 1st, that goes back to sort of what we've already talked about, their progress towards the pillars in their own strategic plan, their performance related to the responsibilities identified in this agreement, their total membership at the beginning, end of the period, including any additions and any members that left the Chamber, and then their financial status, including checking and savings and fund balance, starting and ending, summary budgeted versus actual expenditures and revenues overall, specific budget versus actual on the $50,000 payment from the town, a summary of total outstanding debt at the beginning and end of this period of time, and whether the Chamber has any accounts, loans, or other liabilities that are not in good standing. Going below that, the Chamber will provide the town with copies of their Chamber of Commerce Annual Audited Financial Report, and we've included the Morrisville Innovation Fund here, but our current understanding, after speaking to the Chamber, is that is inactive, and we, I did a little research, the 501(c)(3) status for that expired earlier this year, in, I believe, Genie's research, that they have not done anything with the Innovation Fund in several years, so I think there's some money sitting in that account, but they're not doing anything actively, I don't know that they're adding to it, so it is there, but it is not active. Councilmember Rao, can you mute yourself, please?
Can you mute?
Yes.
So after that, asking for annual audited financial reports, asking for a copy of their proposed operating budget, specifically of the funds allocated to the Chamber from the town, requests for additional funds over the previous year shall be submitted with the proposed budget to the town, and then the Chamber will provide the town with a copy of any policies they maintain related to financial stability and operations.
Okay.
So that's a summary of what we would be asking for or requiring of the Chamber. Sir?
Okay. Two observations, one, I didn't see, like, they used to do East Meets West, kind of like a big event?
Correct.
So that's not even stated.
They're not gonna be able to do that.
Okay.
And I think that my understanding is, and I'm not sure if John knows this from Parks and Rec, but there was some conversation of them being directly involved with the International Festival again this year, and I think they have backed away from that.
I think there was a question as to, had they been involved with part of that in the past, and whether there was some conversations about them being involved, they did not have the capacity to do that in the past, and are not part of it this year, as far as I know.
And the other thing, I did not see, other than support for economic development, they have no obligations to do any economic development as a whole.
So, no, not specifically, I think, once the Economic Development Director is here, we'll be able to better define what some of the small business looks like, I think right now, what we expect is sort of what we spoke to in some of the networking events that would support that, and some of the other work there, and then, once we get our Small Business Person working, which will come soon, we actually did our interviews for our finalists for Economic Development today, so we will debrief that tomorrow, and I'm hoping to make an offer Tuesday, if we have a successful candidate. So ideally, a new ED Director in September, and as soon as they're here, one of their primary obligations is to finalize the job description, or review the job description, we have one for small business, and then get that advertised, so we can get that person in here as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So if you move to Exhibit B on page 11, that speaks to what the town is gonna provide the Chamber, so that's the one-time payment of $50,000. That will be continuing to provide voice-over-IP phone and voicemail services for their two or three phones that they have, we provide them internet in the building, we provide networking infrastructure and firewall services, skipping, well, we post Chamber information in Town Hall, not valued. They will mention, excuse me, we will mention and link to the registration for upcoming Chamber events in next week in Morrisville and in social media, to help them put their information out, collaboration on economic development and small business programming and training, so we will work with them on that, and we will provide them education and guidance on the town's economic development philosophy and plan, particularly as that plan is finalized and implemented, once the new ED Director is here, and then, specific requests for support of town events or programming, when not done in direct collaboration with the Chamber, we can make those requests of them. So that is the highlights, again, of what we have put together, I believe it addresses the, the spirit of the former agreement, it's different, because that was much more an economic do-the-work agreement, this is more of a support-the-work agreement, it does speak to, again, one of the documents they have is what the Chamber provided that they thought they could do in this year, so that's, the majority of that is included into this document. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Good job.
Done. I have one question, is, where does it state that the Town Manager will be one of the Board of Directors in this whole agreement?
That is not in this agreement, that is, let me check on that, because we have always been ex officio, I'm not sure if that's in their bylaws, but let me check on that.
Yeah, because if not, you know, it should be in the contract.
We can certainly include that.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So, what I will do, if I may, I will follow up with your three peers that could not be here tonight, try to discuss this with them, see if there's any feedback from them. I think I have two changes to potentially make, one's just a missing word, and then the other is this ex officio status for the Town Manager, and assuming your peers don't have anything, then I will just let the Chamber know that essentially, I'll send them a new update, but there's no tangible changes, no substantive changes, and give them a period of time to respond back. And then, I guess my other question for you is, do you want to hear their response to consider that in terms of what this agreement is, before you potentially approve it and ask them to sign it?
If I may, I think my understanding was, when you started this agreement, it was seen by Lori, Emily, and others, so they have seen this contract, so you expect something coming back from them?
Emily has seen it, the board, the full board is not, to my knowledge, I asked Emily to work with me on it, so we could get a first draft done before they reacted to it, so I think they will share it with their full board for a reaction, and then, you know, Rose has it as well to look at.
I think it's fair.
Okay. I just want to make sure, so I will, I will share with you any feedback we get from them, and then see where we can go from there to get this adopted. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Before we get into our next item, I think, let's take a ten?
Yeah.
Ten minute?
Thank you.
Ten minute break. Thank you. We'll convene back at eight to eleven. 10-minute break. Thank you. We'll convene back at 8:11.
Those I have to take before I get out of bed.
You want chocolate peanut butter or chocolate honey oat or peanut butter?
I think I got it.
So, Anne has one. And has a woman that, um, the.
Right, right, right.
I'll bring the meeting to order. The next and the final discussion item is a Town Council Roundtable, and Town Council recognizes Giselle Rodriguez, Deputy Town Manager, to lead the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, for your time. So we are at the next edition of your roundtable. We have six items submitted for tonight, so we will just allow each council member to introduce their item. You will explain what the item is for, what would you like to have explore. Your fellow council members can ask any follow-up question to get a, gain the best understanding on what you are requesting, and then the point is, do we, do we get, have enough consensus to then direct staff to investigate or not? So that's essentially what we will do tonight. So we have first two items that were submitted by Council Member Robati. So I'll be, let me zoom in in this so that you can.
And Giselle, I think to be clear, it is in the order that was submitted, so, right?
They are listed on the spreadsheet in the order they were submitted. Okay?
All right.
I'll turn it over to you, and then you can introduce both of your items.
Okay, so the. Switch mics? Yeah. Oh, sorry.
I have, I have this one. Is this one working? Okay.
Okay, no, no problem. Okay, so my first item is a, I submitted this one actually the day after we talked about the budget, because we were giving out all this information about programs that are available to seniors, and I thought that it would be a good idea to have a, an informational meeting, maybe at Senior Center, also broadcast on Facebook, where we could get together different, like, people from the town, obviously, but also people from Wake County Social Services, people from, you know, people from different places where there are programs available to seniors that we may not know about, that they may not know about. So there might even be some local businesses that would have, would have programs for seniors that they're not aware of, free services that are available to them, et cetera. So I thought that was something we could put together as kind of a panel discussion that would, that might relieve some of the emotional and psychological pressure that seniors are under as they age. That is my idea.
So just to, Giselle, if we could talk, so I.
I got my mic on.
I got my mic on. I'm good. So, so right now, there is a fair that's, and I'm probably using the wrong word. The Senior Center already does some kind of, mine works, doesn't it? Am I good? My mic? Okay. So right now, the Senior Center already does some kind of affair, where they bring in resources for seniors and they talk, and they bring in vendors, and they talk about all kinds of resources that are out there for seniors. So what I wanted to clarify and I want, or maybe highlight, not clarify, highlight, is I'm not sure at those events they talk about the, because you put in here about worried about their tax bill. And so the resources that are available to them, I'm not sure that's highlighted at these events. So I just want to make sure that that is being highlighted.
Yeah, and, but also, but also like townsters, I didn't know that they could get, get whatever they call that, where the people go up and get your trash cans, like.
Oh, good point.
I don't know if that's widely known, but I mean, what, you know, what other stuff do we do for seniors? Like, maybe they get a discount at the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center, or, you know, like, some of them may not even know about the Smart Shuttle, you know. Anyway, that, that was my thought.
Good point.
Put together, I mean, honestly, it could even be that we highlight those town services at one of the existing forums. Maybe let's not reinvent the wheel.
No, I think it's a great idea. I have avail the services of her birthday and seniors at Cary, you know, because I had some, my mom's, some documentation, and there was person, you know, staff, which is there. And I like, I was there at the fair, but they did, like, Blue Cross Blue Shield, they were giving away, like, the pill boxes and other things.
They give quite goodies.
But, but the good thing, that is a good thing for the people who are present in that room. But I think this should go beyond on our website so that everyone can at least know these are the things, or you can go to this place, or people, like, elders don't like to read so much, so at least phone numbers, because they like to call and do it, I think, but it's an excellent idea.
And a user-friendly button on the website, nice and big. Are you a senior? Click. And for your resources here, yeah, that's a good idea, too.
All right. Steve, you have a question? A comment?
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. All right.
Okay, we'll move that one forward.
Okay, second.
Okay, so my second one was, I attended a young entrepreneurs fair in Morrisville at Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and it was freaking amazing. And so my idea was, when we get, like, there's a lot of town events where we have vendor booths, and my idea was that we could offer the booth, I don't know if people pay to set up those vendor booths, I was assuming they did, but if they do, we could do some outreach to those young entrepreneurs and offer them a free space, like, like, not all the free spaces, but, you know, maybe five free spaces on a rotating basis to the young vendors where they could present their business ideas. And, you know, I mean, they could make some money like the other vendors, but I just think that it would encourage them as young business people, and some of those ideas were crazy and are going to be successful. And my idea is, I just think we, as a town, want to be on the, want to be at the foundational, at the foundational level on that. So, and it isn't going to cost us anything to have one more booth set up. It's literally free, so.
So, yes. Doesn't, in the Thai organization, don't they help with entrepreneurship? And so you, the chamber used to hold an event similar to what you talked about, Anne, before the pandemic, and it was all young chi, well, young, young adults, young adults who, yeah. Yep, yep. And it was fabulous, because they, they were selling their products, and it was really very well done. So, yeah, somehow to incorporate them in, in our events, yep.
I, I think excellent idea. But we have, space will always be limited. So suppose, like, you don't want 15, 20, then, like, how will you basically pick the top six? So we have to partner with someone, you know, to, who can do the screening, because I don't think the staff, or, you know, how will you pick that idea as a good idea, too? If we can have some kind of, someone who can administer that, and then the six people can have their attends, and it's an excellent idea, because Thai, whatever they do, it is only in the group of people. They do not go out like this in open forums to go sell their idea.
Right, display their.
Display their thing.
I think they did back when, when the chamber, I think, I think. It was so long ago, I forget now, but you're, you're correct. This, this gives them much more exposure.
Much more exposure. Okay.
I think, I mean, all Anne has asked people is to add a certain number of, like, Richter's stall, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And how do you determine, you know, if a lot of people come, then what is it?
Why don't we just wait and see how many people take advantage of it?
That's.
Also, possibly, so a certain amount of outreach to let people know these are available. Maybe that's where Thai could come in. You know?
Yeah.
They can apply like any other vendor, but maybe Thai could make them aware of the opportunity.
And the other idea is not Thai also, but the schools have clubs, you know? They have so many business ideas and everything, all, like, some of the ideas are just excellent. I think reaching out to the school and say, hey, we are having this also adds up very good.
I do feel like a little bit we're getting into solutioning here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Where, where I think, like, if we give a thumbs up or thumbs down and let staff work out the details, I think.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah, let's go.
Any?
Okay.
I didn't have it on previously.
All right, so the next item is Wiki, and she's not there, so it's better we wait for her to come and, you know, make a point until, unless you think.
Can we not move a new node for prior point retirement committee forward?
No, I'm just, the, I think what Giselle was saying, if we can, if you think, if we all think that, you know, we like this idea, we can move forward, but I think it would be fair for her to come and pitch it. So that was the reason, like, you know, it is an item here. But if we all think that's a good idea, then we can move forward.
Our next roundtable will be in September 26. So that could be presented by Council Members Kruggins-Johnson in September 26.
I would.
Okay.
Give her the opportunity to speak.
Exactly, to give, okay. All right. Next, we have Steve Rau. Steve, can you hear us? I'll be come back to him, and then. So, once we hear, we'll come back to him, but we'll continue. Liz Johnson, you're next.
So I'll be real quick, too. Mine is, um, his audio's not working. Okay, he may have to wait till September, too, then. Mine is just, it's my understanding, and you all can correct me if I'm wrong, since the Senior Center has opened, we have not done any kind of survey, and we're, we. the Senior Center has opened, we have not done any kind of survey and we're, we, anyhow, so I'd like to do a survey in coordination with our new, there's a new Senior Center Supervisor, so in coordination with the Senior Center Supervisor and our Senior Advisory Committee, do some in-house kind of survey to get the seniors' feedback. And I will tell you what, what, the impetus of this for me, back when council met with the Senior Advisory Committee in September, one of the things they felt strongly about was that they were not being heard, and so I want to make sure that they feel like they're being heard. And so I thought some kind of survey to get their feedback on the, on the programming that's there, what they like, what they don't like, and, you know, what improvements they'd like to see, so.
I'd actually like to broaden that to their, to not just the offerings of their, of the Senior Center, I'd like to broaden that and get some information about their experiences as a senior living in Morrisville. Because I, I mean, I think they have a lot of input and we don't, like, we're not seen, you know, we're not seniors, we're not, I mean, some of us are, I guess, but, but like, I think that they have a lot of input to offer on a host of things that have nothing to do with the Senior Center that would be valuable.
I'm, I'm good with that. And, and we designate 55 and over as a senior in this town, so.
All right, Donna, thumbs up, so thumbs up. Excellent.
Okay.
Okay. Steve, I'll come back. Are you able to hear us and can you speak now?
His last message was that he can hear us, the volume's low, but we can't hear him. He's having, I think, issues with audio on his end. He suggested push that item to September, but maybe not.
Okay.
Okay.
Is, is he back online or? Okay, fine. So no worries, Steve, we'll come back on September.
Would you like me to sum in further?
Yes. Okay. So this is an item I brought about is to discuss the philosophy of future cricket enhancements on Church Street Park. Every time we go, we lost the opportunity to be one of the venues for the World Cup, and rightfully so, because we do not have the infrastructure to support it. There's a lot of requirements which are needed, and we are looking at more and more, you know, popularity growing with the Major League Cricket and other crickets. So we are one of the first to have a ground, but we are getting more stadiums, you know, Brandon is getting calls from Seattle and San Francisco because these teams are, you know, building their own stadiums. So the question we have on the table is, we keep it as is, then there's a potential that we will not get any more future games because we, they have to spend a lot of infrastructure and other necessities to have the games. And for example, lights, the games were at three o'clock, it was so hot with aluminum on, you know, the bleachers, kids could not even sit there for a long time. And we did not have a good attendance because it's 9,500 degrees outside. So, and that is one, and because we did this because we didn't have proper lighting. And then also, we lost the opportunity of hosting one more tournament because they wanted for 10 days, the tournament, there will be several teams which will be coming. Our pitch does not support it because pitch, we have four pitches, but at any point of time, only two might be active. So each one can take only a few days and, you know, because of the amount of bowling and running between the fields, so the bounce and all those things. It is important that we should at least be able to hold a tournament and not just a game or a two, because that way, if you look at MLC, it's, it's only four, five days and then there's a break. That's the part of the reason they're having a break, they're going to Dallas and coming back, is because we're giving our time for our pitchers to get back. So it, it is important, not just from that point of view, philosophically, what do we do with it? It is gaining popularity, but if we don't use opportunity now because we are getting the hotel motel tax coming up, I think, Brandon, when are we getting those up?
When are we getting them?
The, when, when are the applications start for that?
So next, probably summer. But again, when, when we make that application, that needs to be a shovel-ready project. So depending on the extent of what you want to propose, there is work, considerable work to be done. There is, there is, and, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just giving you where we're at, there is cost associated with that work, because we will need to bring in, you know, consultants to help us take a look at that, to cost estimate what these buildings may need to look like, if there's a structure, all that sort of stuff. There's costs with trying to figure out the lighting and how do we change that to where it's effective but not impacting the neighborhood? So that could all be done. There's some costs that will have to be, you know, realized with that, and then, you know, we, it, it seems, I mean, we're less than 12 months, so we, we've got to get going to make sure that we have a solid proposal for the use of the hospitality tax if that's council's intent.
Yeah, and, and the reason I'm bringing that up is having a big picture of what all we could accommodate on, as a part of a plan, and then use advantage of this to do sections based on how much funds we get, too. You know, because we cannot use all the money everywhere. So we can, we have a whole design, then we can pick which ones to work on based on the grants that we get. And also wanted to explore the opportunity of sponsorship. There is a lot of potential of getting annual naming rights for Church Street Park. So that will also add to the, to the funds that will help us to go forward. So bottom line, you know, my ask is, if we could ask the staff to see what needs to be done, and our staff's knowledge is limited, especially cricket, other than pitch curator, there's a lot of other things that need to be done. And then also, logistically, you know, working with RDU because of the lights and other things, is to give them some kind of a direction where they can go figure that out and then come back with a proposal, okay, this is what we are thinking, and get at least some shovel-ready or whatever before next summer, because that's a good amount of work that they need to do, and it may cost a consultant whatever is needed for coming up with that plan. So that is the ask.
Are we limited in what other types of projects would be eligible for those hotel motel tax dollars? Like anything that's currently on the capital improvement plan?
No. Good question, because we have used it previously with a collaboration of Wake Competition Center, we had got $3 million or something, and then the Church Street Lights. Those are the two examples that I know, and it has to be really viable, the amount of hotel rooms, just the Sri Lanka team, they had 600 rooms. Each people, or each of the teams which are coming, close to like 2,500 rooms in two weeks. So it's creating a lot of business, it's creating a lot of things, and those are the kind of events that come to the occasion to be eligible for these kind of funds.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned that we would be, in a sense, making these improvements on spec, hoping to get those other, those different kinds of games. And so we might, we might build it and they might not come. Like, so is there any way to maybe get more assurance that we would definitely be able to attract it? Because we, we just did a huge upgrade of the cricket facility in that park, and I just want to be able to explain, justify putting more money in there.
And absolutely. I think, you know, we have very good relation with Cricket USA, and they want to host tournaments here. They want to do women tournaments, under 19, and several, that brings a lot of people from all across the country. And if there are any teams like, you know, they, like, USA Cricket has been using this as a ground for their practice, and they wanted to do, I think last summer, you know, because of, unfortunately, because of the pitch, they wanted to do, do USA versus Canada, but our pitches was not ready in time. So their always a preference is to use Morrisville, and because they like the crowd around it and the kind of people and the fan base that gets, that really makes them happy, but we are lacking restrooms and dressing rooms for the players and audio, you know, broadcasting, because that's, if you look at any of the other ones, that's a basic necessity. So a person has to go all the way from restroom, you know, to other place, to changing rooms. It is hard. These guys are international players and they don't want to be doing that kind of a thing. So, okay, all right.
I just, I have a couple comments first, one other question. I would want to know, like, what our revenue was, what it need to begin on the-
I would want to know what our revenue intake was from the MLC tournament, from, we get a per, 20% from ticket sales?
So, our agreement is that we get 20% of net revenue.
Oh.
So for 2023, that percentage was $0. I do not anticipate that to change dramatically in this calendar year. Goes back to what Mayor Rotam Garamella was referencing, is that there is such cost associated with bringing in the temporary facilities to do this, that it really restricts the likelihood of a net revenue share to the town.
And do we have a way of knowing what the potential increase in tax dollars were? Either sales tax revenue during that span of time and the hotel tax?
So we do have a report unofficial, and I'm happy to send it to you, but it is not for public consumption. It was shared with us as a courtesy. So I'm respectfully not going to discuss numbers right now, but we do have a report that shows what the estimated financial impact is from that tournament, yes.
Okay. So, and then, so my question is, what you're asking to get those answers, does that require a study, like for us to have, have a consultant perform a study?
Yeah, like perform, like a consultant perform, okay, looking at the ground, what is needed? And if they come up with what is needed, then to be eligible for the grant to make it shovel-ready, then at least allocate some money for the consultants to at least come up with a design and have a big picture plan. And then we can do in chunks based on how and when we have the money to do it. So, but the three things which are solid, important is the pitch and the lights and the drainage, because it rained and for four days, we could not use it, and people were really ticked off saying that, you know, there is no drainage. So we have issues in our ground, which is like, and I don't want more issues like these and they will just change the venue. Obviously, MLC is obligated to be in 10 years, but other teams come in, they also want, you know, how can, if they're having a tournament, if it drains out, next day you can play. In our grounds, we cannot. So, okay, all right.
Good idea.
So, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Please, no, please. Just a couple things to offer for consideration, and I think one is that we need to also consider, you know, one of the recommendations may be using, for example, the tennis court space to do something. So I think that part of what we would look at is, is there a potential to relocate those tennis courts to another location within the town if that space is needed? You know, we've talked about that a little bit, they need some repair because of some, what's the word I'm looking for? The arc, they, they go like this instead of like this. There's probably a really good term for that. But that, that's one consideration, and then, you know, because you, I don't, I suspect you don't want to give up those amenities, so we would have to look at potential relocation of those amenities. The other thing that I would mention to you is that, based on what we anticipate the scope of this project to be, we will have to get a hospitality tax grant to do it, or we will have to seek significant sponsorship money. And again, I think we would have to have that conversation in the context of other sponsorship opportunities that we have with other projects. Not that it can't be done, but just, I think you want to have those things in your mind. It's, it's not black and white, there's a lot of pieces to it, and we can look at all of that if that's your direction.
Okay.
Thank you, Brandon. So when, when Donna, when you talked about how you had given the tickets away to the kids in your neighborhood and they enjoyed the game, I was so jealous because I could not give tickets away. Nobody wanted to come because it was so hot. It was so hot and they had to sit in the sun. So do we need to do some upgrading of that park with shade structures? And I would say yes.
Yeah, then that is what it is. Instead of going into the details, like, I wanted the staff to basically look at the overall, like, what is needed, you know, to have those crowds coming in. And it could be from shade structure to having more seating or dressing room or broadcast rooms and the pitch or the drainage. There's a whole lot of things that need to be done, you know? The ground looks good, but it is not to have, you know, international games.
But we have to get all of it done before the international games come, is what you're saying.
No, no, no. They, they need a lights, drainage, pitch, and that's the main thing, because that's a playing, they can, they can work with players changing all those things temporarily, but they cannot change the drainage of the pitch.
Yeah, and one thing I learned at this last tournament was that you can have two pitches. I didn't, I figured you have one pitch and then this big old green space, you can have multiple pitches in that area. So, so anyhow, I, I, the ho, the use of the hotel motel tax, 100%, Satish just talked about that only two projects the town of Morrisville has ever gotten out of that hotel motel tax. And if you drive around this town today, there, I don't know, there must be 25-plus hotels that are putting money, well, the, the folks that are staying at those hotels are paying that hotel motel tax to go into this pot of money, and yet we're not receiving our fair share of the money. So, yes, we need to, I am 100% behind making sure we get some projects shovel-ready so that we can, we can apply for some of that money and hopefully get something out of it. So, so that, so that's, yes to that. And then to this specific project, I, I would like to know some more about what, you know, because if we're going to give us up tennis courts, there's, you know, there's a give and take and a balance, so, and I don't know what that is yet. So to have our staff give us some, I'm 100% behind the staff coming back and giving us some timeline or, or projection or something about what this really means and entails, and can we do it in this less than 12-month period or 12-month period, and, and then, of course, what the cost would be to, to even do that. So, yes, I think, I think this field is worthy of, of more investment from the Wake County Hotel Motel Tax, for sure. I would, and I'm not sure we have anything else that would come close to, because you have to prove that you're going to bring in people that are going to spend money in hotels, and so.
I also would like to know if we're, because we have to put design work in to get the project shovel-ready, to be able to apply at all. So I'd like to know if we apply and the project is accepted, can we?
So I'd like to know if we apply and the project is accepted, can we reimburse ourselves for any design work that we've already put in? Because that, because, and if we, and what's the sunk cost going to be if we apply and that project is not accepted? So I would want to be really specific on what the upfront design cost is going to be. And in terms of consultants, also town man, person hours, et cetera. And in terms of consultants, also town man, person hours, et cetera. That provides a woman up.
No questions. I just, I'm in favor of the town getting more data. I'm not saying yes, because my concern is that just even to do this study to evaluate what future enhancements we're going to need, that that's going to be, you know, to hire consultants, that could potentially be $100,000 right there. So, but I'm interested in the town bringing something back.
And, and just to end with, the hotels around here are almost running full. It's so hard to even get a hotel, you know. And, and I think we should get our money shared into it. Thank you.
Yep.
Related to, thank you, thank you for that. So we will investigate these items and bring updates back. So related to this specific item, there was an update provided of one of your, the spreadsheet that is like the, what we call the tracking spreadsheet. Is the tracking of all of the roundtables that have been presented before with updates on what staff has been able to put together. I'm not going to belabor it and try to go over that spreadsheet. It is included in your packet. And I will be glad to take any questions that you may have. So that will be this spreadsheet. And there is an update provided. It was related to, we had received as a roundtable for the town to pursue buying back the open space that was for Wake County, right there at the Church Street Park and being able to buy that back. So that's going through the cycle of going to Wake County Commissioners. And if it's approved, then there will be an agreement that will come back to council to move forward with that. So in connection with the item that you just discussed, so if that is approved, you also have that portion of land that would also need to be programmed as part of all of this analysis in master plan for, for the park. So just wanted to connect the two, make that connection for you, because we do have that roundtable that was already previously discussed. And I think it's an important element to evaluate as part of this. Any questions on any of the previous roundtable items? Anything that I can answer right now? If you have any other roundtable items to submit, September 26 is the next one. As a reminder, one of the things that council as a whole agreed is to limit roundtable items at two per council members. And then, so if you have submitted more than two, what I have been doing is I take the first two submitted or coordinate with you if you would like to include the other one. And the remainder one, I will include it in the following one. So if you have submitted three, then I have already included that additional one into the September 26. And there's no need for you to resubmit that item. I already have record of that. So feel free to load roundtable items in there as they come to you. I'll keep track of them. And I will just only include the two and then push forward the other ones. If you have a specific preference on in which order you would like to bring them forward, just let me know. And I will include them in that particular order if you have any specific interest.
I, I think you're doing a good job. Whoever is putting requests by date, I think that's the best way to go. Because they are taking the effort to put it in. And last minute like us should be at the last.
And thank you for, and the close of, the close of business was late. So, because I, I did mine after 5:00 PM on the, on the day. So thank you for allowing us to, our close of business might be a little different.
Business may be a little extended hours, right? Maybe on extended hours. The, the link continues to be open, so you can enter items at any time.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other things that we need to discuss, Brandon? Okay. So is there a motion and a second to adjourn?
Second.
Councilmember Robbity and second Liz. All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none, the motion carries to adjourn the meeting. That's it.